You ready?
Good.
All set? Manistee City Council Meeting for Tuesday, December 19th, 2017 is now called to order. Please stand while Councilmember Goodspeed leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, please take role.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Here.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Here.
City Manager?
Here.
City Attorney?
Here.
DPW Director?
Here.
Finance Director?
Here.
Planning and zoning Director?
Here.
Public Safety Director?
Here.
And City Engineer?
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on items on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address, and limit your comment to five minutes, if you would please. Are there any members of the public that wish to make comment? Yes, sir.
I'm Grabowski, Fourth Street, Manistee. In reference to the letter E over here on this recycling, I'm strictly against 94 gallons. It would take me about two and a half years to fill something like that up. In four cans and two bottles, I have every two weeks, and I don't eat much at home. But I think it's way, way too much. I can't see the city forcing every household to have a 96-gallon tote sitting in their yard. Most of them will be sitting by the curb, like the garbage ones, the totes I don't know. I'd rather stick with the two-bag limit like we've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that wish to make comments on agenda-related items? We'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the City Manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular course of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, and notification regarding the next work session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski, a second by Councilmember Grabowski. Is there any discussion? Would you please take role?
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of Proposed City Ordinance 18-1, adding Chapter 866 Medical Marijuana Facilities to the City of Manistee Codified Ordinances. The City Attorney, with input from the City Manager, planning and zoning administrator, and Public Safety Director, has drafted Ordinance 18-1 Medical Marijuana Facilities. Ordinance 18-1 is drafted in accordance with the authorization given the city by the Michigan Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. The proposed ordinance is intended to describe the process by which the city may decide to permit and regulate medical marijuana facilities located in the city. The ordinance does not authorize for visiting centers in the city. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If the ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. At this time, council could take action to introduce Ordinance 18-1, adding Chapter 866 Medical Marijuana Facilities to the City Codified Ordinances.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski, a second by Councilmember Cooper. Is there any discussion? Comments? City Clerk, would you please take role?
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item B, Consideration of City Ordinance 18-2, amending Chapter 411 Michigan Vehicle Code to add a provision allowing the city to charge an individual under the super-drunk-driving law. Chapter 411 of the City Codified Ordinances adopts the Michigan Vehicle Code and allows criminal prosecution for violations of the vehicle code when the offense has a maximum imprisonment of 93 days or less. The State of Michigan enacted a drunk-driving law, commonly called "super-drunk driving", which makes it a crime if an individual operates a motor vehicle with a blood alcohol content or BAC of .17 grams per 100 milliliters of blood or more. For a first-time violation of the super-drunk-driving provision, an individual may be sentenced to jail for up to 180 days, community service of up to 360 hours, and a fine of not more than $200 or more than $700. An amendment to Home Rule City Act permits cities to prosecute violations of the super-drunk-driving statute as city ordinance violations, as long as the city's ordinance reflects the higher penalty. The City Attorney has prepared an amendment to Chapter 411 allowing prosecution for the offense as an ordinance violation. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. At this time, council could take action to introduce Ordinance 18-2, amending Chapter 411 Michigan Vehicle Code by adding as an offense that may be prosecuted an individual operating a motor vehicle in the City of Manistee with a high blood alcohol content.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski, and a second by Councilmember Beaton. Is there any discussion?
I just have a question for Mr. Taylor. Is this to bring our ordinance in compliance with state law? Is that what this is all about? Why are we doing this?
The reason we're doing this is that historically, cities could only charge criminal violations that carried a maximum penalty of 93 days in jail. When the state enacted this statute that allowed the, what we call "super-drunk-driving" statute, allowed prosecution and imprisonment for up to 180 days in jail, cities could only enforce that statute if we had an ordinance that permitted the higher penalty. With an amendment to the Home Rule City Act, it now allows cities to, in fact, amend its Code of Ordinances to provide for the greater penalty. And so it's just to allow prosecution for that.
So we're just marrying state laws, which... Right. Okay.
And this one's just the next stage of a DUI, correct?
It would be a first-defense DUI, but where the blood alcohol content is quite high, .17 or more, yes. If it was a second offense, either OWI or a second offense, .17 or more, then that would be a higher crime that we could not prosecute under city ordinance.
Any other questions or comments? City Clerk, would you please take role?
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you. Item C, Consideration of a Contract to Reconstruct a Sewer Main on 12th Street. Sanitary sewer along 12th Street from Ramsdale to Kozieosco Street is sloped backwards and creates maintenance issues. The replacement of the sewer line is required as part of the Filer Township Collection System tie-in. The project was publicly bid, with two bids being received. I read the contractor, the base bid, and alternate A and an alternate B numbers for both of the contractors. Elmers submitted a bid, $216,353, with an alternate A of minus $2,000 and an alternate B of minus $15,000. Swedorski Brothers submitted a base bid of $175,392, with an alternate A of minus $4,800 and an alternate B of minus $25,500. Staff recommends awarding a contract to the low bidder in accepting both alternatives. The City Attorney has reviewed and approved the contract. At this time, council could take action to approve a contract with Swedorski Brothers Escavating for the base bid minus alternatives A and B in the amount of $145,092, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreements.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, the second by Mayor Protem Zalinski. Is there any discussion?
Can someone just explain what alternative A and alternative B means for everybody?
If you recall, we actually bid this project two times. The first time that we bid it, we tried to get the project awarded and constructed before the end of the construction season last fall. At that time, because we had a delay in getting the permits from the state, the construction period was very short, and we did not get any bids submitted on that. At that time, we had asked Elmers to submit a price to us because they were constructing the Filer project adjacent to it, and when they submitted a price, we noticed that there were a couple things that were very expensive in their bid, and that's what the two alternates are. So, alternate A is, there are, Morton Salt has brine lines that cross the project right behind the Family Fair store, and I think there's six pipelines, six pipelines that cross there, so it's very intricate. Morton is on-site whenever there's any work that's done around it. So we offered the services of our Vactor truck to hydro-excavate around those pipelines, which makes it much safer and much easier, and so the contractors placed a value on us doing that. It's probably less than a day of work for two of our guys in our Vactor truck. So that would be alternate A. Alternate B is when that pipeline, because it's an active sewer main, while it's being replaced, you actually have to transfer the sewage from the upstream side to a downstream side, that's done with a pump and hoses. The contractor, when we got that price from Elmers, it was very high to do that bypass pumping. The city has a pump, and we've used it three other construction projects, and probably saved through over $100,000 by using our pump. So we offered that as an additional alternate, and Swedorski Brothers felt the value of that was $25,500. We've already paid for that pump since we bought it four years ago, three times, by doing this type of work. So for us, it's a little bit of usage on the pump, a little bit of setup and take-down time, and then some diesel fuel. So I think it's very valuable and worth both of those alternates.
When do you think the project would start?
It'll start probably as soon as the frost laws are lifted by the State of Michigan and the County Road Commission. Typically, that's mid-April, and then we expect them to complete the project in June towards the 1st of July.
And this is on the same main that broke, or...
Right. When we were, the sewer lane, sewer main, sewers run downhill. For some reason, 80 years ago, this one was built uphill, so we have to clean that main every two weeks, and we were looking for some defects. We actually lost a $4,000 piece of equipment in that pipe, cleaning it. So when our contractor was in town cleaning sewers and televising for the Saw grant, we had that section cleaned and televised. They actually found our head, got that back, but as they were cleaning it, a section of that pipe collapsed last fall. So we had no choice but to do a repair in place and repair it going uphill instead of downhill, even though this was already planned in our capital improvement budget.
Is that, I just want to ask a question about the pump. When we bought that pump, was that pump the one that you don't need to have a man by it all the time, and it'll actually signal somebody if there's a problem?
Correct. Well...
Manpower is what I'm getting at.
Yeah. The pump is very versatile. We use it on water main breaks, we use it on safety bypassing when we're doing maintenance on lift stations, we use it at the treatment plant when we're cleaning out the headworks, and so it's been very valuable. But it's very versatile also, so in a situation like this, we can put it on float controls so it runs on automatic, so it's got floats that trip it on and off, and we set it up, it runs 24/7. Our crews will check it daily, fuel it up, make sure everything's working fine, but it doesn't have a call-out. When we use it on the Sixth Avenue pump station, the contractor actually put a dialer on that because the flows there are so high and so critical, so a dialer was placed on it at that time, but I don't think that would be necessary for this project.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jeff. City Clerk, would you please take role?
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item D, Consideration of Approving a Contract Amendment with Republic Waste for Fiber Recycling. The 2015 refuse contract with Republic Services did not include fees for fiber recycling. At that time, the commodity's market value for fiber material covered the cost for collection and processing. The market value of the material has dropped, and therefore, Republic has requested a contract amendment to include monthly container rental and disposal of fiber materials, $207.84 per container, with an annual escalator of 2%. The city currently utilizes five containers. At this time, council could take action to approve a contract amendment with Republic Services to include a fee schedule for fiber recycling and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the documents.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, and a second by Mayor Protem Zalinski. Is there any discussion?
Dad, can you clarify the email that was sent out today about staff approval?
That's on the next agenda item?
Oh.
That was in regard to the mandatory curbside recycling.
Okay. Sorry.
Any other comment? Question?
I just want to know when this contract expires?
Yes.
It says that the 2015 refuse contract did not include it, so how long is the contract going to run?
We are currently in the second year of a five-year contract, so there'd be another three years remaining on it.
I've got a question on this. The language of this would suggest that the commodity market for fiber is driving the need for the amendment. Should that trend reverts itself and the commodity market pick up and just turn profitable, or are we going to see a reduction in charges?
There's kind of twofold there. When the contract was renewed the last round, the previous round had an amendment sheet that tied the pricing to the Manistee County Recycle Program for both the roll-off box and the fiber dumpsters. That was omitted from the last contract, so there was not a number for either of those two services in there. So what we're doing here is making an adjustment. The fiber commodities have gone down, but that's not the sole driver in this. There was always a cost before, and that cost has just disappeared, and it was omitted and was left untouched until found during an audit process, so it was brought up. If the fiber markets were outstanding right now, we probably would have continued to dissipate it, but the fiber markets are lower, and with the decline in fiber in general, newsprint magazines, that market has become very volatile. If you've been watching China right now with what they call the national sword, they've actually changed all the newspaper grades and started to decline exports of paper, and that's where a majority of our paper in the United States goes. So in the foreseeable future, I don't see a dramatic upswing change looking at that market.
Thank you.
Do I hear you saying we've been getting two years free?
You've gotten two years free, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what I thought you said.
Yep.
Any other questions? Comment? City Clerk, would you please take role?
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
No.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
On this one, yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
No.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item E, Consideration of Approving an Amendment to Republic Services Contract to Include Curbside Recycling. The City of Manistee offers recycling at a drop-off site in the industrial park. City Council has asked Republic Services for a proposal to close the drop-off site and move to curbside recycling. Each refuse customer would be supplied with a 96-gallon cart to be emptied two times each month. The estimated new cost of the service would be $2.76 per month for each customer. If approved, the program switch would have a July 2018 estimated start date. At this time, council could take action to approve the contract amendment with Republic Services to institute a curbside recycling program and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the documents.
I'll motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Pontiac, then a second by Mayor Protem Zalinski. Is there any discussion?
Would you like a further explanation on the letter, email we received today in reference to this?
I'll take the first swing at it, if you'd like. We got the documentation early last week from Republic, wrote up the council agenda item, sent it off to the City Attorney to review, and the reason why we tried to get that on the agenda very quickly is because if this proceeds forward, we need to get our grant application in for the carts. Since the council agenda packet has gone out, the City Attorney has reviewed, and there's some language cleanup that needs to occur. We've been working with Republic to do that. It doesn't change anything that's before you substantively, but the contract's not ready for you to approve. So I believe what Mr. Taylor emailed out today is, we'd like council's decision on whether or not to proceed with it. If we do proceed with it, then we'll bring back at the next council meeting the updated contract amendment to include that. If the council's not in favor of moving forward, then we'll stop work on that, and it goes away. I would also like to point out that if you proceed with the curbside recycling, the previous contract amendment that you just approved for the fiber costs, those would go away and not be included in these fees. What's that? After July, after it's implemented, correct?
Well, I was really hoping that we'd hear some numbers to tell us how many households were in the first, second, and third tiers, and how this 276 has arrived at. I'm very concerned about the lower end, the $5.80 a month charge for trash pickup. That tends to be smaller households, and I believe it tends to be seniors who don't need, number one, a 96-gallon container. I'm getting a lot of feedback on that, and I really hate the fact that I'm going to add more money on top of their water and gas and trash.
If you look at your agenda packet, there's a letter from Republic, and on the first page of that, towards the bottom, is the summary of the service levels. So on the residential side, the mini level, there's approximately 1,600 residents that are subscribing to that. At the regular level, there's 504, or approximately 500 residents, and then at the tote level, there's just over 700.
So they're all at the lower, I mean, most of it's at the lower end?
It's over half.
So we have about 22%, 23% of city residents that have a tote option for refuse removal. So we're sitting at about 76%, 77%, 78% that simply put bags of trash out. Numbers I'm looking at, between residential and commercial, we got 1,687 people with the minimum service in town. That's 54%, which is a majority. There's no way for these people to move to offset the cost of recycling. As I've stated before, surveys that we have run in the past show very strong support for recycling if there is no added cost. When I look at the 278 and the 2,980 total services that are provided, we're talking about $100,000 a year from our citizens and businesses for mandatory recycling. I see the issue, I had asked for the numbers before at what levels of service we had throughout the community to make a more informed decision. I'm pretty uncomfortable with the high number of mini services or minimum service that we have out there. We're now going to add $2.78 a month to a lot of people that probably aren't going to recycle and certainly are not going to need a 96-gallon tote. One of the most common things I've heard from people is, where am I going to put this tote? You know, I don't have a garage, or I don't have a storage shed to put it in. It's just going to be left sitting at the side of my house, or, you know, and then, as we heard tonight, people say, you know, that is far beyond the capacity that I would need for any level of recycling. We offer a mini service of one to two bags of trash per week. We offer a standard service up to six bags, and then we offer the tote. We're saying, take it or leave it, 96 gallons here. Use it or not, you're going to pay for it. I'm not real comfortable with that. Just offering some comment, so...
Council asked us to get the information, so it's before you.
I guess I don't understand, if we take away the recycling center, we take away the 200 and someone for the fiber, how is it that we're not saving money? Can't that money go towards the two?
We are, and if you look at my memo and in Republic's letter, the cost to establish your curbside recycling and purchase the carts and do twice-a-month pickup service is $4.25 a month per residential customer. If we use the money that we pay for the recycling center and the fees that we pay to recycle all that material now, and use that money and reallocate it to bring that number down, that's worth about $1.09 per customer. And then, we believe if we're successful in obtaining the MDEQ grant to purchase the carts, that that could also reduce this overall program by 40 cents a month, which gets you down to that $2.76.
You know, the fact remains, we pay $40,000 a year for the recycle center. Now we're going to up the contract $12,000 because of the lack... Now we're going to up the contract $12,000 because of the lack of being charged in the past for the fiber drums. That's $52,000 a year. When I multiply 276 times 2,980, which totals all of the services that are provided in the city, that's $98,000 on top of the $52,000 that we're going to use to offset the cost to bring that down. That's quite an increase in cost to the consumers in the city of Manistee. You know, I think my original intent in exploring the possibility of curbside recycling and making it mandatory is because we've got issues with the recycle center. Yes, Manistee Township closed theirs down. And yes, we probably have people from other townships or people that work in communities outside the city that are using the refuse center that are not supporting it with their tax dollars. We have illegal dumping. We have issues in trying to monitor and keep it clean. I'm just not comfortable at this point in imposing an additional $100,000. We're pretty close to that in cost to the public on top of what we're already paying.
What I'm hearing is that we already have a recycle and they like what we got. And so I start thinking to myself, what is the problem? Why are we changing? The reason we're changing is what echoing with Mr. Smith said, that other people are using it. Maybe we need to do a better job of monitoring who uses it, figure out a way to regulate that. That in itself would bring the cost down because we wouldn't have as many carryoffs. I think we could do a better job of monitoring how we use it. Maybe put a gate on it and lock it every night. You know, I don't know, there's all kinds of possibilities. But I'm not hearing a lot of positive feedback. It's about two to one. Those that recycle will recycle, but there are a large number that don't and just don't care.
We've made progress. Mr. McCullough, I believe we've had a lot less dumping and illegal items and stuff since it was moved from the grog location to where we're at. I mean, a more open area seems to have deterred some people from leaving their car seats and items that are completely unauthorized then. But has anyone ever been cited for an illegal dump?
We've turned a couple over to the police officers. I'm not sure what actions they've taken.
Chief, have we prosecuted any of those? Have we done anything with that?
Cases that have been initiated, we haven't had anything that's been prosecuted. The ones that were with the larger, I believe, black plastic, those were recyclable, they just couldn't get inside. So that was the most recent one, I think, that we had. Nothing prosecuted yet.
Thank you, sir.
Just to go over what was discussed before, to get smaller carts, it's not an option, correct?
There were two. Mike, recording. There were two mentions going back to Councilmember Beaton's comment. One was for a monthly service. And then there was also a consideration for those who didn't want to have the cart to have the ability to have bins still if they chose. There are a few residents that still remain in bins, even with the cart program that's in place today. So the cart itself, it's not, to go from a 96 to a 65, the footprint is identical. It takes the exact same amount of space, it's just a little shorter in height. And to go to the 32-gallon container, the 32-gallon container is impractical for curbside recycling, so it's something that we're not comfortable offering. So that leaves us with the 96-gallon for the best bang for the buck for the residents. You know, you could go to a 65 and it could be the exact same cost, but I'll let you know that there's no change in the footprint as what it takes up in the space, at least.
But it could be offered if they, if people...
We could do, we could do one or the other. We could do the 96 or the 65. We couldn't do both. So you'd have to choose which level you'd want. So we could offer the 65, though.
In the letter I'm reading or the answer to a question, it was the 218 gallons?
Correct.
But there'd be no difference in the price, whether you had 96 or 18, it wouldn't matter?
No, truck still has to stop.
We're not talking about implementing anything until July in 2018. It would be my thought that, I mean, we're six-plus months out in front of that. I think there's a lot of questions, a lot of concerns that still need to be addressed.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table this till the next council meeting and have it put on the next work, agenda, work session for further discussion.
I'll second that.
Wait, did you hear what you just said?
I'm sorry. I want to make a motion to table it and to the next council meeting, regular council meeting, and put it on the work session for further discussion.
The work session's after the next council. I'm not trying to argue.
No.
I just want to make sure.
I'm trying to figure out, do we have a work session before the next council meeting?
No.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to stop you on.
Okay, thank you. I would like to see further discussion on it. I'm just, I'm confused about it.
Does council want it at another work session or a council meeting? We can do it at the January work session.
I'd be in favor of that.
And table to the second meeting in January?
Correct, we can do that.
Sure, okay.
I have a motion to table to the second meeting in January and add it to the work agenda. Is there a second?
Yes.
I'll second.
Sorry about my confusing there, being confused.
I have a motion by Mayor Protim Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Pontiac to table this item to the second meeting, regular meeting in January and add it to the work session agenda. Would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Your Honor, if there's any additional information that the council would like, I would just let that go and we'll get that together for you before the work session.
Thank you, Jeff. Item F, consideration of criminal ordinance prosecution agreement with Mikla Myers PLC. The city's prosecuting service agreement ends on December 31, 2017. The agreement authorizes the county prosecutor to prosecute the city's misdemeanor ordinance violations. We experience problems and the prosecutor providing timely information and recommend council allow the agreement to terminate. The city attorney currently represents the city on civil infraction ordinance violations. He's interested in representing the city on criminal misdemeanor ordinances, ordinance violations. The city attorney is proposing a one-year agreement, January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018, at an hourly rate of $215, with a not-to-exceed amount of $12,387.90.
I'll make the motion. Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't need it.
That's all right. It's written there.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mayor Protim Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Goodspeed to take action to approve the criminal ordinance prosecution agreement with Mikla Myers PLC to prosecute misdemeanor ordinance violations. Is there any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. And if this was information that was sent to me today, I was on the road all day, so I didn't read any emails that came in. I don't know the difference between civil infraction ordinance violations and criminal misdemeanor ordinance violations. Can you give me an example of each so that I understand the difference?
Sure. The city in its Chapter 411 incorporates the Michigan Motor Vehicle Code to be offenses under the city ordinance. The Michigan Motor Vehicle Code has offenses like speeding, which would be a civil infraction. And it also has offenses like drunk driving, which is the most common one we think about, but other motor vehicle violations that are 93-day misdemeanors, meaning the maximum punishment would be 93 days in jail. So criminal ordinances are offenses that are punishable by jail time, potential jail time. Civil infraction ordinance violations are those that are just subject to fine.
So what's the most common criminal misdemeanor ordinance violations that we have?
We didn't have a lot of drunk drivings last year. I think in talking to Tim, it was only 13 drunk drivings. We had 40, I think 40-some other misdemeanor violations. You know, it could be reckless driving, which is a misdemeanor offense. You know, there's just a number of them, but primarily we're talking about motor vehicle code violations when... Number that we quoted in that contract was the amount that was paid to the prosecutor in county in 2016.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comment? So can I ask, what do we typically recover on an annual basis in fines?
Not a significant amount as we tried to track that. And the prosecutor's office hands were a little bit tied because the district court wasn't really able to, with its computer technologies, still wasn't able to give us a real clear picture of what the city recovers on criminal misdemeanor ordinance violations. What we believe last year, or this year, the amount recovered is four or $5,000 only. We're going to track that better so we get a better understanding. But to give you an example, if there is a fine and cost imposed for a criminal ordinance violation, two-thirds of that goes to, is it the state or the county? One-third of it comes back to us. And that's what we recover by prosecuting something as a city criminal ordinance violation.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about how we write the ticket. If we write an offense on a state law, does it go to the prosecutor or does it go to, would it go to you?
If it is purely a state criminal violation, it goes to the prosecutor's office. We'd only be handling those tickets that are written that are city ordinance violations, which again are misdemeanors punishable by 93 days or less, except the super drunk driving statute, that are motor vehicle violations. I think that we have a couple of other criminal ordinance violations, possession of drug paraphernalia, disorderly person. We have some noise violations that potentially, I think, could be criminal ordinance violations.
Our agreement with the prosecutor currently only covers those things specific to the city. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? City Clerk, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Item G, consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Board of Review, Compensation Commission, Downtown Development Authority, Historic District Commission, Parks Commission, PEG Commission, Planning Commission, Tree Commission, and the Zoning Boards of Appeal. Mayor appointments require a motion, second, and council voted support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After all nominations are made, council votes on the nominees until one nominee receives majority support. The following applications have been received. Downtown Development Authority, one vacancy, term ending 6/30/2019. Applicants must have an interest in property in the downtown district. Mayoral appointment. Ms. Sherry Wild, 7700 Millarch Road, Onecoma, Michigan, is an applicant and I nominate Ms. Wild for the position.
I'll support the mayor's appointment.
I have a second. I have a motion by Mayor Protim Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Grabowski. Would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Parks Commission, two vacancies, term ending 6/30/2018. Applicants may be non-residents but must own real estate or a business profession having a license, business location in the city, or have a child attending school within the city. Mayoral appointment. Mr. David LaPointe, 8675 Aitma Road in Calva has made application and I would appoint Mr. LaPointe to this position.
I'll support.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protim Zalinski, second by Councilmember Beaton. Would you please take a roll?
Where?
Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Where's his interest?
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Thank you.
Notices, Communications, and Announcements, a report from the city manager. Regular part of each city council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. City managers' offices annually prepare as a comprehensive review of calendar year activities. That review provides city council and the community with an opportunity to step back from day-to-day operations and take a longer look at what has been accomplished during this year. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, as I said last year, this is a wonderful time to, as I refer, just reflect on what our accomplishments have been this year and really celebrate a lot of successes. Sometimes we're so close to it, we don't step back and realize what we've all accomplished for the year. So we'll go through a number of highlights of the highlights, but I wanted to focus on three that I think deserve particular attention. Number one is the amount of money that the city's spent in streets, over $600,000 last year on our major and local street improvements. As you recall, a portion of 12th Street was reconstructed, six miles of major streets had a microservice application, and approximately three miles of local streets were crack sealed. And the impact of that money and that work is going to be evidenced by the significant improvement in our 2017 Pazer rating. So I want to go through it really quickly and the staff will, I think it's next month we're going to do our, it's either in January, February, do our street report. But this is just showing you what our road system is right now in our major streets. Over 60% are good, 11 are fair, and 28 are poor. We go to our local streets, the larger portion is poor, followed by good and then fair. But if you look at the comparison from last year to this year, and even, we even put in 2008 information, but if you look at 2016 in the green versus 2017 in the darker red or brown, look at good. We increased significantly the roads that are now classified as good. 3.1 miles to 11.7 miles, all in one year. If you look at fair, we went from last year, 8.1 miles rated fair, we've reduced that to 2.1. So you look at our poor, we've reduced the number of miles of poor roadway in our city for the major streets. So it's quite a significant improvement. If you look at the local streets, again, our good rating, we increased that significantly. We decreased the number of fair, we made that improvement. And our poor, we've made an improvement there. So I don't think anyone in the community can argue that we're not making improvement in our street network. It's evidenced by what you see on the screen. So the emphasis that council has placed on streets has borne fruit. I think you can see it as you drive around. I think you can see it as you drive around the community. Now, we'll get on to the, the next one would be the, yeah, we'll, yeah, you can pull it up, yeah. The next one I want to talk about is the combined sewer overflow and what we're doing. I think council is fairly aware of that. We're bringing your reports every quarter. But we got a new discharge permit in January and requires the city to close that last C S O by September first, twenty-twenty. Continue to televise our sanitary sewer system. So far, thirty-one miles of televised sewer, and the remaining six miles we're going to do in the spring. We've done another round of smoke testing to locate illegal connections, worked with property owners to correct a number of the previously known and recently discovered illegal connections, and work toward obtaining property to locate a basin to capture and then treat any future overflow. Finally, the last thing I wanted to emphasize was the economic development that the staff has provided to developers. It's beginning to show some results. North Channel Brewery is now open. Work is ongoing on the residential units above the brewery. Two homes in the Chippewa Cottage development are complete. Several new businesses, some in the D V A district, opened this year. There was a number of other developments that staff devoted time to that unfortunately didn't come to fruition, but it provided a chance for the staff to work with developers and just refine our game in terms of development. So, those are the three that are going to be highlighted in my message, in the highlights. And then I want to go through a number of other highlights that we're proud of. In the manager's office, I've been there two years, Cindy forty-three years. Primary responsibility is the efficient day-to-day operations. Items like council agendas, contract negotiation, citizen communications, strategic planning, and council goals. Some of the highlights, you know, that we focus on is intergovernmental cooperation, budget, construction projects, governance, community development, and operations. So, in our budget, it was published in March of twenty-eight. We did the work sessions in April. Budget was adopted on May second, and we, the significant thing is we increased our fund balance by over a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And we did it with no millage rate increase, but we did increase the scheduled adjustment to water and sewer bills. So, I think it's quite significant that we were able to provide a balanced budget to council, meeting the council stated objectives without using fund balance, and in fact, we added to the fund. Construction projects. As I mentioned, we completed a portion of Twelfth Street from Maple to Oak. Continue to work on our Saw Grant, our street work, microsurfacing and crack sealing. And we're doing the crack sealing in-house, which provides some efficiencies and cost savings. We got our new discharge permit, and we're working on a correction, correction active plan, corrective action plan. We replaced a valve at River and Oak, or several valves at River and Oak, and then there's been private development, and there's other construction projects. This is Twelfth Street, where it was completely finished. This is a picture that Cindy took outside her window, just showing the crack sealing on Maple Street. In governance, we've had economic development discussions. We're working with Manistee Township on the sewer franchise agreement. We're finalizing the last details. We had an agreement with Filer Township on the connection and exercising the valve and when we're going to be using it and how we'll use it. We continue our monthly governmental meetings with Manistee County, Filer Township, Manistee Township, and the Little River Band of Ottawa Indians. And we've reformalized and re-instituted our Sands Park Control Board, which is an endeavor between the city and Manistee area public schools. We also have entered into a memo random of understanding with the Grand Central Conservation District. They actually treated our areas in our community for invasive species. We continue to work with Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce Leadership Program. This last year, they took on the Cities Project. And this is the second year that we've had an employee from the D P W in their leadership program, and it's proved to be very valuable. Outside in the lower parking lot at City Hall, we've established a safe zone where people can do Craigslist transactions. If there's some kind of a split custody of children, they can safely exchange between mother and father there. It's all under video surveillance, so it's a nice, safe thing to do. And council's authorized revenue bonds to do some work on eliminating the combined sewer overflow. In terms of community development, we talked about North Channel Brewing. We worked extensively with Hollander Development, Edgewater, Chippewa cottages, Third Coast Development, Council on Aging, Jocelyn Cove, and the expansion of Green Acres. We, probably one of the biggest things that we did in terms of redevelopment and community development is we got a redevelopment-ready community certification. Denise spearheaded that. At the time, I think we were the tenth community in the state that achieved that designation. Positions the city favorably for grants going forward. And in seventeen years, we've received over one point one million dollars, in fact, almost one point two million dollars in local revenue sharing grants from Little River Band of Ottawa Indians. We continue our discussions on economic development process. I continue to serve as the point person for that. And then we obviously partner with the D D A, the chamber. We have been working with A E S, and it's all dependent on the scope of the project. We've adopted a new master plan, several new businesses opened. Our Creations in Style, Miller Embry P L L C, River City Music School, Manistee Cab Company, Farmers Insurance, Northern Vintage Decor, Best Pest Management, Two Slices, and several home occupations. Quite a number for one year. We've eliminated the annual household hazardous waste collection. That was a duplication of the program that is conducted by the county. So, in lieu of that, we had a scrap tire program that was a cooperative effort through a D E Q grant plus public services. And Harbor Commission is working to address the condition of the patio. We implemented a new employee assistance program this year, and that offers twenty-four-hour crisis hotline and counseling services. And that's just a couple of things they do. There's a wealth of services available to the employees. We've got new voting equipment, implemented a new financial management software, and we've seen an increased amount of beach debris this year due to the high waters. But our D P W is, as always, is on top of the situation and keeps our beaches presentable. We completed an inspection on the Maple Street Bridge. Our police department, four members, went to the police pistol match and came home winners. That was exciting. City assessor revised the A M R standards and policies for the city. We've upgraded the wireless network, upgraded surveillance cameras, installed recording system in council chambers. So, those are just a real quick synopsis of some of the things that our office felt was the cream of the cream of our accomplishments this year. So, certainly would entertain any questions council might have.
Thank you. There's been a, there's been a lot of things going on this year. A lot of progress made in the city. Questions, comments?
Thank you for all your hard work. I think we're moving forward. I think there's a lot of positive things happening. Just need to keep that momentum going.
We're hoping in two thousand and eighteen, we can do that.
Concerns and comments. Citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comment, limited to five minutes. A letter submitted to council will not be publicly read. Are there any citizens that wish to speak on municipal services? Yes, sir.
I got one. On the second slide there, you showed a six percent increase in water and sewer. I thought by ordinance, it was only two percent. Where did this other four percent come in?
The six percent was approved by council as part of the budget process. That was recommended by our water and sewer study.
Oh, okay, okay. I get it. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens that wish to make comment? If not, we'll move on to officials and staff. Mr. Taylor?
Nothing beyond the highlights.
City attorney?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
City clerk, this is your last session with us?
It is. Nothing, Your Honor.
Or you have one more?
I have a second.
Planning and zoning director? Finance director? Public safety? Public works?
As everybody's aware, we live in Michigan, so today it was in the forties. By Sunday, it's supposed to drop into the teens, and next week, it into the single digits. So, because of that, we're going to take precautionary measures, and we're going to issue letters this week to begin our run water, which we do every year. Even though there's no frost in the ground at this time, with all the moisture and with those deep temperatures, we've decided to implement that. So, we'll get the word out. We'll do the press releases, the letters to all the affected residents and businesses, just like we do annually. With the new financial software we had, that process is much easier on the staff to be able to get out. On the good side of that, because it's getting colder, this wind is supposed to die down tomorrow, and then we intend to, if not tomorrow, the next day, install a liner and fill the ice skating rink and try to take advantage of those cold temperatures to hopefully get the kids out skating soon.
Let me just, this is not a citywide water run.
It's not citywide, no.
Okay, just make sure.
This is just residents that are, have services that are subject to freezing, and we keep a list of that annually, and then we send out notification. So, you only need to do, to run the water if you receive that letter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. City engineer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Our councilman, councilman?
Yeah, I'd just like to wish everybody here a Merry Christmas and a prosperous New Year. Happy and prosperous New Year.
I have a couple of things. I know we've worked very hard on the, on the medical marijuana police power ordinance. I was wondering if, though, just to make sure we've done it all our I's and crossed our T's, and it won't change my vote, and it won't change anything. I would just like to see if we could get in touch with Lieutenant Andrew Ambrose, and I think Chief Kozel can get in touch with him. He's spoken to a number of, spoken to volunteer fire departments. He's brought information to them on what to look for. I guess one of the problems they've had is disposing of, maybe not disposing, but the smaller growers have been doing some illegal work as far as enhancing the T H C levels in the byproducts of the plants. So, anyway, I would just like to make sure that, hey, we talked to the Michigan State Police, and I know that they're aware of our ordinance, and just get some feedback on if, make sure we're doing all the right things. I'm sure we are, but it's just nice to reach out and double-check. Seems to me there was something else. Oh, yep, I've got one other thing. Sorry, I should have written it down. It's been a really long day for me today. We have, the county had received that fourteen million dollar bond for recreational use. And it has occurred to me that a good use of that, if it was applicable, I'm just wondering why the senior center, with all of its activities that it has, did not, or maybe they did try to make contact with those grant people. Yes, I know they pulled out of the project, and I think that's very sad, but I wonder if they could have gotten some funding through that. I don't know how to track that down. It's just a thought.
Number one, I don't know if they've had any discussions with the community foundation. The second thing is shortly after it was made public about that endowment, I met with Laura Heinselman, and they were still working on setting up everything they need to have in place so they can start making grants off of that. And they didn't expect that would even, that mechanism would be in place until sometime early two thousand and eighteen. And they thought they might be able to do some donations or grants towards the latter part of two thousand and eighteen. So, I don't think they're, to my knowledge, they're not set up yet to receive grant requests.
As far as the M R A board, we went and met with them, and nowhere's near yet. Nowhere's near yet.
Okay. Well, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Thank you for all of your hard work and your accomplishments the last year. I think you've gotten us off to a much better direction than we've been in a long time. I appreciate it.
Just want to wish everybody happy holidays. Enjoy, enjoy family, and be safe.
The family that we adopted, I just want to say thank you. I'll just read what they sent me, what the shopper sent me. Said, "For one child, got an Amazon Fire, a pink sporktop, art kit, bead kit, Barbie horse set, hats and gloves. The other child got a Atari game system, remote car, Star Wars Lego set, have an Eagles hoodie and a T-shirt, Eagles T-shirt. Each child, we got six gifts." Thank you, people. Thank you. And everybody have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Just echo, happy holidays, and hope everybody has a, for me at least, a healthier year. Thanks for hanging in there with me. I know I've been, I had a few absences, so next year will be better.
Chief, I want to thank you for your Redbox efforts in getting those spread throughout the community. I'll be taking advantage of that pretty quick to get rid of some old prescriptions, but I think that's a real plus. I appreciate your initiative on that. And councilmembers, if you would each take one of these. These, it's annual evaluation time for the city manager. I would ask that you return those in a sealed envelope, either to Cindy Lokovich or drop them off at the clerk's office by the twenty-ninth so I can consolidate them as I have in the past. And Mr. Taylor, if you would add that to the agenda for January, closed session for your evaluation.
Probably the second meeting, or?
Second meeting, yes, sir. An opportunity.
Will we get these back?
Get them back, why don't you get them back by the first meeting in January?
I understand that. But will we receive these back, evaluation time? There's been evaluations.
Do you want them back again?
I want mine back.
I'll make a copy so you can have it back. Yes, sir. I do, what we did last year is that I'll consolidate the ratings and give an overview and provide the city manager with a copy of each of the ratings. There's a place to put your name on there. You're not required to put your name on there. Be thoughtful. Be sensitive like you would if it was your own evaluation being done. So, with that, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Everybody be safe. Thanks to everybody for a great year. Look forward to the next one. With that, motion to adjourn.
May the-
Second. Second.
We'll, we'll bring that out a whole lot better than it has been.
Merry Christmas.
Just too, I hope you don't get stuck between the two bridges again.
Bob's out until the second, so he's my bodyguard.